10th, 2024. We welcome to those viewers who are watching and everybody's here. We have a brief internal audit report I want to share with you. And why it's important is because you have a resolution in your packet that we haven't gone through. And I want to make sure that Becky, Julie and myself go through that with you before you vote on it. The final budget is before us. Then there's a topic that I'd like Rick to, it's not on here, but if we have time, and I believe we will. Rick has already set forth the summer programs and the summer training that we're going to be doing both with kids for summer programs and the training that we're going to be doing with teachers. It's, I would say it's nearly done, but there may be some tweaks to it. I just want Rick to show it to you, to show you the extent of what we're doing because you will then down the line be asked to vote on different personnel matters to fill those training spots. But we had an audit committee at four o'clock. The audit committee has approved the internal audit report that we're going to give you tonight. And I'm going to ask Becky and Julie to come forward. There were two findings on the audit report. I'd like to set this up a little bit and then ask Julie and Becky to explain to you, the board and to the public, what those findings were, and then I'll tell you what we're going, what we're doing going forth. So the Bonnadeo Group is our internal auditor. They presented to the audit committee. They've been working with us for the last six weeks. We had a pre-meeting with them last Friday evening. They looked at two areas in our financial system. They looked at our accounts payable area and they looked at our grants. Those topics were chosen by the, by the audit committee. We thought especially grants was very important because we have the American Rescue Funds and on and on and on. So I'm pleased to tell you that they made a number of observations and suggestions, but only had two findings. And before I ask Becky and Julie to explain them, I want to tell the public and the board, none of the findings or observations dealt with $1 or $1 nickel. They were, I would call them paperwork, things that we need to tighten up in case the controller was ever here to audit us. But it did not affect $1 of public taxpayer money, which is a good thing to know and a good thing to say. Just so you know, we'll do, we'll do these separately. The first area that they looked at was accounts payable. This is when we use vendors and we are billed and then we pay out. So that was the first area and we had one audit finding in this area. Becky, would you like to take the audit finding, explain it and what we're going to do?
Sure. The finding was that the claims auditor who reviews every expenditure, every check issue that goes out the door, she normally will initial the check packets as she looks at them. But in the same time, she also has a prior to checks printed report that she compares everything to, she initials and she signs a warrant. So in three instances, they noticed that her initials were just missing on the paper check packet. But in all three instances, she had reviewed the packets, had approved them in the other two formats. And normally then they'll leave them out so she can finish signing them. And the one had like five different invoices in a packet. She initialed four of them and not the fifth one. So it's, we have a strong process in place already. She does review each one, she does initial each one. But just to strengthen that as part of our cap, there is a utility, I'll call it, within our financial software where she will be able to click on that payment voucher that's prepared by AP and also give a formal approval in that method as well. So we're not going to change the current process. We're only going to add to it and enhance it.
So that was, that was three initials missed out of 25 packets they reviewed. This is no excuse, this is my responsibility. One of the packets was right before the Thanksgiving break. As Becky said, one of the packets had five packets clipped together. Four were initialed, one wasn't. And this added belt suspenders to go into the Envision Financial System and initial it there, check the box there, will allow us to check to make sure everything was checked, reviewed and initialed. Again, they were reviewed and checked.
I know this is a difficult question.
Sure.
How many of those initials do they do in a year?
Oh my gosh. Well, you've got figure each month, there's about three, we're averaging what, like 350 checks?
315.
Yes.
315 and there may be five initials in each one?
Oh.
Sometimes 10.
So.
Yes.
Three hundred, so we're talking three, four thousand a month? So we're talking 40 or 50,000 a year.
Correct.
Nice job.
Yes, and like I said, she is, she definitely looks and reviews every packet.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Three too many, but nice job.
Right. We always strive to have everything done perfectly. But when we need to correct something, we will. The next group that we asked that the internal audit review was with respect to grants. You know, we're coming off of all that American Rescue Fund money. We have our Title I, Title II, III, IV, IDA. We have tons of grants in this district. And once again, once again, she, we did a really good job. There was one small, I would call it small, audit finding. This has nothing to do with one nickel, dime or penny. And again, is a procedural error that they picked up on and would like, like us to write a cap on. Would you go through what that was?
Sure. The area is they compare, you know, budget to spending and then to final cost reports, make sure you're following all the rules and regulations. We did. The one thing they found was that when we prepared one final cost report, and mind you, everything is itemized in those reports separately. There were over a thousand transactions in the one grant. But one of the checks that they tested, when they looked at the amount listed on the final cost report and compared it to what we paid in Envision, there was a small discrepancy. However, the total was accurate. In all that, it was literally each, we have a good process again in place to reconcile the two. Each check run, we log in the amount being paid against the current PO, list the check number, and it was literally a typo. So we're just going to tighten that up and the overall reported for the grant was accurate. There was no, you know, totals were incomplete. So what we're going to do now is just beside that, every time there's a check run, you know, log the checks, check the total against the financial software. We're also going to do that once again before the final cost report is handed over for signature and submission.
So, so again, a lot of packets, a lot of checking. There was one error that they cited, we own it. We have a cap for it. So when you get to item 6.12, that's what we're talking about. 6.12 on your agenda is to ask you, and the audit committee approved it, to approve those two responses to the two findings that we had. If you approve it this evening, we will call Bonnadeo. They'll take the draft watermark off the document. And then Julie and Becky have until April 30th to send that into the state. So I'm sure they'll do that right away. And then we have fulfilled our internal audit requirement for this school year. And again, no findings of money, some procedures that we need to tighten up. Any questions? To your point, Mr. Petrosi, and I thought it was well taken. We also in the audit committee reviewed 1,408 packets. We reviewed November, December, January and February. The total amount of money that she reviewed was $31,966,937. And we found two exceptions. One was for $600 and one was for $100. The $600 one was in December. It was because we were honoring a retired basketball player and we got his jersey framed. And our athletic director wanted to get one for him and one for the gymnasium at the high school. And we did it in a rushed way and didn't have a PO in. And the other one was for $100 and that was with our Head Start program. And it had to do with certification licensing?
Yes, they, they have to submit clearance for new employees. And two names were submitted in error. And then when we asked, when they asked to like disregard that submission, they didn't need the clearance. They said they couldn't do that. So they had to go ahead and go through the process of clearance a second time. And of course, that wasn't planned, so it was a confirming purchase.
So that's not bad, $700 for 32 million. Our goal is always zero, but we're still under 10 for the year. And I know we joke when we were up in the hundreds, we're under 10 for the year. So next year we'll be under five. So we're looking forward to that, but that's what happened in the audit committee. If there aren't any questions, I'm going to ask Ray to display the 2526 school budget. This will be the last time we display this budget. So that you're aware, this will be item 6.10. This is my recommended budget to you, to the community for May 20th. And very briefly, there have been no changes since last week. Unfortunately, New York State has not completed the state budget. So that $7,030,627 line of foundation aid has remained flat. We haven't changed it. As we've said all along, if we were to get more money in foundation aid, and I think there's a possibility that we'll get some, not a lot, we will just use fewer dollars in the reserve amount. When you look at the other side of the budget, you could see that we believe at this point, we have accounted for everything. We have figured as accurately as possible what the increases will be. The budget has grown about 4.18% year to year. The 6.2% is the fact that we're getting, we're getting about $2.5 million worth of additional aid that we can't use on program. We have to use it to pay off the capital projects bond. So that's what raised the budget level more and more. One of the audit committee members, you know, noted, why does the budget keep going up as much? Well, of course, there's the contractual sale rate health benefit lines. But also we're just completing a $30 million capital project and we're going to continue to get the money back through our state aid that we can't use for people or program. We have to use it to pay off the bond that we're doing with this capital projects. So if you scroll back down, scroll up again, right? You'll see there's the number, it's in purple on the resolution and that resolution is 6.10 tonight. The number is 202,640,136. If you approve that this evening, that's what will go on the resolution in front of the voters on May 20th. Again, if you go up a little bit, Ray. We were able to do that by using reserve funds. We did, we did not raise the property tax levy. We did not cut people or programs. We dipped into our reserve funds for about $3.6 million. And that's how we balanced the budget. Ray had them highlighted nicely. You know, the reserve for debt we have to use. But the gray that he's done below are what we used in reserve. The use of fund balance at the bottom is our 4%. And as Julie explained last week, she used a percentage of the actual expenditures to get that amount. Again, that total is about 3.6 million. We don't know today, but we have a sense that when Drescher and Malecki are before you in November or October, we will have some carryover to replenish. I don't know the number, but I think it's going to be very close to that number, very close to that number. Last year we had more returned. I will say this because I said it in the audit committee. As we continue on, and this is my 10th budget, where our accounting and our budgeting is getting tighter and tighter and tighter and closer and closer. So while last year we may have had 6 million to use to replenish, this year we're going to be closer to 3 million. It's, it's getting tighter. Now that's a good thing and it's something the New York State Controller looks at because he doesn't, the office doesn't want you to pad the budget and have too much in reserve. He, he, the controller would say, you shouldn't be doing that. You should be giving a tax break or what have you. What I can tell you is that we are, this is the tightest budget that we have ever put forth. So I'm, I'm pretty, I'm very confident, very confident and very, very comfortable recommending this budget to you. And I hope that the taxpayers will approve this or will, will take a good look at it, their choice. But I hope that the taxpayers will understand the importance of education. No tax levy increase, no program or people cut. We were able to get back, something Rick will talk about. Camp Wolverine is back, summer school is back, two salt trucks were purchased. A boiler was purchased here. We got in a lot of things. The only thing, the only item, two items that I don't have a dollar figure with are judgment and claims, and we know what CVA stands for. But our, our attorney and our attorneys have been doing an excellent job keeping those claims in a good place with respect to the victims. And the cell phone pouches. Because the government, governor's budget has not passed, we don't know what's going to happen. My assumption is that a bell to bell cellphone policy of some, of some form is in the budget. I just don't know any of the details because we haven't seen the document. I do have a preference to look and will look with stakeholders about purchasing pouches. In her original budget, she had 13 million set aside that you could apply for. I don't know if that will last. But that's not accounted for in the budget, everything else is. If you scroll up a little more, Ray, you can see despite the use of all of our fund balances, we still continue to have fund balances remaining. And we are not touching the tax levy with, we are not touching the tax cap. And all we need is one voter beyond 50%. Julie and Becky?
Covered everything.
If you could put up one more slide, Ray, because I want to make sure I'm explaining all of the things the board is voting on. There's one more slide and this is the property tax report card. This will be tonight, item 611. And this is, we're asking you to support this and then we have to submit this to the state, correct?
Yes, yes, we have to submit it by tomorrow.
By tomorrow, we have, so we're hoping you support this. Julie, in a brief form, could you tell us what this, what this is?
Yep, so this is something we have to submit every year. So this shows in column B there, our budget amounts for this current year. Excuse me, I'm sorry. And then in column D is our proposed budget for 2526. So you'll see that budget number for proposed of 202,840,136. And that percent change is the 6.2%. That's the higher amount because that does obviously include the capital projects, the ABFA payments we were discussing. You'll see that the tax levy has stayed the same at the 25, 25.8 million. And then scrolling down, Ray, you can see column F, I'm sorry, excuse me, row F. This has the, these are things that we usually talk about on the tax cap in January that gets submitted, so that summarizes that information up there. And that will show that this year we would be able to raise the tax cap one point, raise the tax levy 1.4 million without exceeding the tax cap. And also we put our public school enrollment on there. And you can see that number did decline about 70 students. And then there is the CPI that's prefilled in by the state of 2.95. That's the CPI the state is using. And then on the bottom, that's where you'll see our reserves and appropriated fund balance along with our unrestricted fund balance, that's the 4%. So that first column is our actual from our audited financial statements. And then we make estimates at this point right now with what we know for this year. And then Ray, there's a second tab. Thank you. And this summarizes all of our various reserves and the balance that they are today and then our projected balance for the end of the year. So you'll see our workers' compensation reserve and our plan to utilize 250,000 of that for the 2526 school year.
That's quite a workers' comp reserve. I remember when we, if a toaster trip, we couldn't pay for it.
You'll see our mandatory reserve for debt service. So that we are required to spend, we have to spend that by the time we are finished paying off the project. So we do have a plan to spend that. And you'll see that next year we plan to spend 915,000 of that. We have our reserve, the employee benefit accrued liability or EBLRs. That is to pay for terminal leave. So when employees retire, their terminal leave payments. We plan to use 600,000 of that for the next school year. We have our ERS reserve, that is for our retirement contributions for the employee retirement system. We plan to use 450,000 of that for the 15, sorry, 2526 school year. And then we have our TRS reserve, which is for the teacher retirement system. And there we plan to utilize 850,000 of that for the 2526 school year.
So this report card goes to the state, it also goes to the public?
Yes.
So those are requirements. We'd ask you again this evening to support that. It's backed up by the budget.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I'm just, a crazy question. What if we didn't approve it?
I don't know.
Could you just, in your travels, I'd just like to know what some of these things that we have to approve? Were they defined us or?
No coaster.
Take the coaster back?
I know, the form is due by April 28th. But you are, like after the board adopts it, you're required to submit it within 24 hours, but I don't, I don't.
I'm just curious. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just.
It's a good question and I, maybe there are some communities where it's happened, you know?
I just, yeah. Why wouldn't you approve this? It's good, all good news.
Right.
Maybe they would not, I, I, this is conjecture. Maybe they wouldn't release state funding.
Could be.
Yeah.
And maybe, you know, the other thing that they could do is they could send a crew to capital cleaners to look for potential signs or symbols of why that wasn't approved. I'm not sure. But I would, I would assume that their threat is to withhold, withhold the aid.
Well, sometimes if you have a conversation, you think of it.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
No, it's true.
I'm sure Questar could answer that.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll find out.
We'll call Questar to answer that. I wanted to say that, and of course I wanted to introduce Marcasia McCrery. Would you please raise your hand? Marcasia is, joined us at the audit committee. She was faded at the Black Achievers Dinner, congratulations. She is one of our accountants. She came to our audit committee. She is a lovely person, we're glad to have you. We stole her from an accounting firm, which was what we like to do. And she is, you know, she's a great representative of us here and a citizen of Niagara Falls. I'm glad she's here because it's the two ladies at that table who worked together to make this look so easy. They do all of the work and make all the decisions. And you're right, it's not easy. It's complicated. I think that they've got this down to a science and I'm really, really proud. And you could, you could rest assured, members of the board and public that are watching, that every nickel, dime and date, date and form has been accounted for based on our audits. So I feel that we continue to be in a very good place with the budget. I, I would ask you, Mr. Petrosi, if I could make a comment before you take 610 and 612 to reinforce the budget narrative. Okay? Anything for the ladies? To the, to our, without naming you, to the table over here and to Becky and Julie. Great leadership, great work and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Ray, you know what I'd like to do, and I think Rick will have plenty of time. But what I would like to just go through the, excuse me, I'd like to go through the agenda. The purpose of, the purpose of a lot of this is to make sure you're comfortable voting on these items. If we don't go through these, you know, you may not be comfortable and I don't want that to happen. So please note, as we slide through this, the minutes and the budget transfer number nine. I'll, I'll call on Maria momentarily for the personnel reports. But please note that there are no bids at all. If we, there are, there are no bids and there are no short-term contracts. If you scroll to 601, and I know Ms. Dunn, Mr. Valardo were traveling for school board reasons last week, so I want to make sure they're comfortable and understand why we're going through all of these. David Lowry is the person who asked for your support to represent us. Area one is our state representative area, he's our liaison. Mr. Lowry has come to a board meeting before, sat right over there and has been a good steward. 602 through 604 are the approval of the code of conduct, the building level safely plans and the comprehensive plan. This is to schedule the meeting on May 8th. On May 8th at 6:30, I will ask Ms. Masaro to go through any changes to the code of conduct, building level plans, et cetera. This is something that we do regularly. 605, we have non-residents who access, who attend public parochial schools or in private schools. Because we provide the health services, we are allowed to bill the districts from where those students come for their health services. So this is a resolution to approve a rate and a billing of those students. 606 is in front of you now. We have a Head Start grant. Yes. Yes, sir. No, we don't know. They have their own nurse. Yeah, we pay for it, we pay $4 million. No, no. They, they need to take that out of the 4.1 million dollars that we, 4.3 million dollars that we pay them. Good question though. 606 in front of you is a revision to the Head Start grant. Because of, because of a lessening of the number of students, the team to my left had to revise the Head Start grant. 607 is, I'll explain this especially to our board members that weren't here. We have a boiler here. We, as you know, we can't get reimbursable aid on this building or the CEC because there are students in the building. So we have to pay dollar for dollar. So Earl has been monitoring the boilers here. We have two boilers. One is completely gone and we're running on a secondary boiler. We have money in this year's budget, about $186,000 plus to repair and replace, to replace a boiler completely. Greater Niagara Mechanical will follow the project labor agreement and is really almost ready to start this. What we're doing however, is we're exceeding our equipment line in last year's budget. So we have to check with Drescher and Malecki to tell us that we can do this by resolution. Usually if we're repairing, replacing something, we wouldn't bring it to you in a resolution. But because we exceeded the amount of money in the equipment line in order to back up our budget, we are putting a resolution forth. Six, 606, you know, our sports fields have ticks. We have to have your permission to use pesticides out there. There'll be a 48-hour notice and Earl will make sure that the spraying is done when there are no games or people out there. At 609, goes back to the salt trucks. We want to standardize Ford products for a lot of reasons. The main reason is that that's where our tools and equipment are. That's where a lot of our training is. So we're asking for a standardization of Ford products for those two salt trucks. So we're asking for a standardization of Ford products for those two salt trucks. And you will see those, if you approve this, you will see those on your May bid sheet. 10, 11, and 12, we talked about. 13 is one change order. It is, we spoke about this last two, last week. The front of Abbott, because of a water leak, the paving and milling and swells is not in good shape. So the owner, the district, asked to have the front of Abbott repaved. And we have money in the contingency budget to do this. I believe it's about $26,000. We're going to use contingency capital projects money that is adable, and we're hoping to get that done as soon as possible. The remaining, what are the, six are payments. Last week, you had a presentation on all the capital projects. These contractors continue to do excellent work. We're about 80-some percent done. As you heard last week, we are going to have everything wrapped up by August 31st in motion. Those are our resolutions. If you scroll a little bit more, Ray, we have, we've had four, almost four weeks in a row of board meetings. We have a little, a bit of a hiatus. The meetings are on May 8th and May 15th, coming back. So we do have, and remember, you have a statutory meeting on May 21st at 8 o'clock to approve the budget and school board elections. That's a traditional one. And you have to do it 24 hours after the polls close. And our polls close at 8 o'clock on the 20th. So those are the, those are the resolutions that we have before you. I think they're pretty straightforward. Maria, do you have any changes or denotations to the personnel reports?
We did care of the new, but since we sent the reports earlier in the week. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Are you okay?
I'm absolutely fine. I didn't mean to do that. So if you're looking, again, we denote the changes with the little stars next to the things. And they are on, for the certificated report, they are on the schedules, the per diem, the Schedule B, and D, E, F, and G. So if you have any questions about the additions, those are professional developments. Flag football is one of them. Medical and administrative home teaching positions is another. Some additional coaching positions. And as Mr. Laurie has been pointing out in the last several meetings, the SEPs for the additional schools. We added some names for those. So if you have any questions about the asterisks on the certificated report, can I answer those? If not, on the classified report, there were several as well. Most of what you're seeing on the classified report are change of status. So those people who are being changed from probationary to permanent, those folks have all been evaluated by their supervisors and by their administrators. And it has been recommended to Mr. Laurie, who is now recommending to you, that they be moved from probationary to permanent. So you're seeing those on page two, all the way through page five or six. On this, this is on the classified report. And then we also have some additional pre-K associates for the kindergarten jamboree. Anybody have any questions about the classified report? Thank you.
Thanks. So it's pretty straightforward. We went over most of this a week ago. Hopefully, these are items that you're used to seeing, and they're pretty straightforward. We're asking for your approval this evening, and we'll start to prepare for May. If there are no other questions, I would like to introduce one topic that isn't in your packet, but I've been watching with great pleasure, something that Rick Corella has been working on with the team. And Rick has put together, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, these are not complete, but they're, they're close.
Yes.
These are close. So Rick, if you wouldn't mind coming to the mic, and then I'll set it up. I'd rather have, I'd rather have Rick come to the podium. The first document I'd like Rick to go through, Ray, are for the students this summer. This, this will show you, you know, we added back Camp Wolverine. I want, I want Rick to quickly go through all of the summer learning programs that we have. Some of them are paid for by grants. Some of them, of course, you saw, are in your general fund. So if you could take us through that first, Rick?
Certainly. So the, right at the top here is the elementary learning program. That was one that you agreed to put into the general fund budget. I did survey parents about their needs and wants for this type of program. We did receive a strong response. So happily, we will be able to run it again this year. It will be from July 14th through August 1st. It's going to stay a 15-day program. It will be headquartered at 79th Street Elementary School this year. And something that we haven't done, but in previous years, but will work well for us this year, is you also asked us to keep the Camp Wolverine Junior program. So the Camp Wolverine Junior will be coupled together and run on the same schedule and in the same building with the ELP program. That will keep things simpler for families that have children in both programs. They'll be able to share resources, and we'll be able to service all the children with the contract that we will do with the Boys and Girls Club for recreational activities in the afternoon. So it'll be a, it'll be a much fuller program and offering for both students in ELP as well as Camp Wolverine Junior. The ENL Summer Camp, which you've seen before, will be running again this year. Usually, it runs the week right after ELP ends. But this year, we're staggering it by a week because in between here is the Kindergarten Transition Jamboree, which will be on the 7th. Is it, Mrs. Buckman? It's the 7th of August. So our elementary ENL staff is heavily involved in that event and working with families. So many of them will, would need to be in both places, so to speak. So we staggered it by a week. On the second page, you'll see our high school sports and enrichment program. That is also a program that we have run for many years. It is still grant-funded through the 21st Century Grant that we have for Prep School Extended School Day and also High School Extended School Day. So that will run at the high school, at the fieldhouse. It'll include the sports that we've had in the past, as well as some visual arts, the entrepreneurship club, and the F-bites culinary program. Camp Wolverine Senior will be part of the credit recovery program at Niagara Falls High School. The Elementary Extended School Year Program is a program that has grown quite a bit over the last few years, and that is for our students with 12-month IEPs, who require a minimum of 30 extra days of instruction over the summer. So this year, due to construction being in a good place, we're able to run the program at Calphus Primary School, which is a perfect layout and floor plan for this type of program. So we're very happy to have it back there at Calphus. And one thing that's notable here, when you look at that last row, is the Prep Credit Recovery Programs. In the past, we have run those programs at Niagara Falls High School in space there in addition to the high school credit recovery program. So it was, it was a centralized program. But now, through the most recent capital project, when, that you have offered, and we have air conditioning at both of the prep schools, they will be able to run their own programs this year. So that is a nice advantage for them. We found immediately that we had more teachers willing to work the program over the summer. They'll be in their own buildings, in familiar surroundings. We also are hoping that our families and students will be more comfortable coming to a building that they're familiar with. So we're hoping for increased participation. They're also going to be running programs within the program. So the traditional need for students who have not satisfactorily completed their coursework for the year, for them to recover those credits, will of course be offered, and that's going to be the main part of the program. But also, the, each school is going to run a bridge and/or acceleration program for a shorter duration within that timeframe there, targeted at other students with, with needs. Some will be seventh-grade students who are coming into the prep school for the first time. So they'll have a prolonged experience and kind of a soft opening for their, for their school year. They'll be able to meet staff, and they'll be doing some activities to make them feel comfortable within the building. And one of the buildings is also offering an accelerated math program for students. So it's given us the opportunity to encourage more participation and to differentiate a little bit in the, in the programs. What is not listed here is our PTEC programs that are growing exponentially. We had our PTEC recruitment night for parents and eighth-grade students last night at Niagara Falls High School. So we will be starting our fifth cohort of the mechanical engineering and technology students, and our second cohort of computer science applications. They, they have so many different programs and credit-bearing courses that run over the summer, including the introductory camps for the, for the new cohorts, that they would take a page of themselves. So we have them on a separate document. The one thing to note there is that this summer, as our students advance in the program, we need more space and more specialized equipment. So some, all of the kids that will be involved this summer will be having their activities headquartered both at Niagara Falls High School and on the SUNY Niagara campus. So they'll be coming back and forth, depending on their cohort and what their course and activity needs are. So we're, we've been working with our partners over at SUNY Niagara to utilize their spaces, particularly for the MET grant. There's a lot of specialized equipment that we couldn't have at our high school, but we can avail ourselves of it on, on campus. And it's underutilized during the summer anyway, so it's a very good fit.
Is that one's good?
Absolutely.
So that is the start of student, it's the start. There may be other camps or opportunities we'll add to it. What we'll do is we'll bring you that back every month, and as we add to it, we'll put them in a different color so you can see more programs. I know we do STEM things and other one- or two-day camps. We'll add those to you. I'll say two things about this before we move on. One, thank you for your allocation of money in the budget. Can't happen without it. Some of the, some of that you'll see under an A code, some of, you'll see under an F code. Rick and Maria have put the postings out for those programs. And for parents that are listening at home, the Elementary Extended Learning Program, the application goes live on Monday, April 14th. So it's on our website. You can go on our, our live. Is the summer sports camp application ready yet, Rick?
No.
No, okay.
No, but I have a meeting tomorrow on that. So that, that will be, that traditionally will be coming out a little bit later. We like to put it out alongside the high school credit recovery. Because the, the high school program will be posted, and information will start to go out after the high school team has analyzed the student's 30-week grade report. That gives us a much better idea of which courses we need to run and approximately how many staff members we will need to run them.
Okay. So, so those postings are yet to come. Mr. Ventry's here. He'll be doing the analyzation of what he anticipates would be necessary
Right.
For the credit recovery programs. Okay. So that's, that's one part of it. There's a second part of it. And again, this is still a major work in progress. But you're going to start to see this on your personnel report. If you're following internal postings, you'll start to see postings for teachers to participate in these programs. You'll notice many times, these are in the afternoon. Why? Because teachers want to teach summer learning in the morning and do this in the afternoon. This will also grow. You'll see them on your personnel report and be asked to support, hopefully support this work. But one of the things that we were able to get a look at this week, and I know Rick, Carrie Buckman, and myself had a chance to go into the New York State portal this week. It was released on Monday, and it is the Science of Reading attestation form, where by 5:00 PM on September 1st, I'm going to ask Rick and Carrie to complete it for me. But I have to attest that the school district is in line with the Science of Reading pillars and programs and trainings and professional development, pre-K through three.
Right, correct.
So we, we feel, in looking at what the state put out, we feel we're in really good shape. Even if we had to put it out in now, we feel like we're, we're in really good shape. However, you'll see a number of staff development offerings in here to show that we can be even stronger in that attestation. So I wanted Rick to briefly go through these. This is all of the work that teachers will be availed of during the summer months.
Correct. So a few months ago, I surveyed our teachers. They've, we've been training and getting information out about the shifts that we need to make to be in total alignment with educate, the Amendment to Education Law, 818. The, and when we are there, then we need to complete the attestation that Mr. Laurie mentioned. So as we've been doing things throughout the school year, our time to do them is, is limited with, with teachers, limited to our professional learning days that are spread throughout the year. Summertime is an excellent time to get a lot of training done. So I surveyed our staff about what they understood, what they felt comfortable with, and what they wanted or needed to know more about. So based with, armed with that information, I began to work with my staff to put together the offerings that you see here. So not everything on this list is aimed at elementary teachers in pre-K through six, but much of it is. These are color-coded, so I'm not going to go through this line by line, obviously, but I'll, I'll give you a heads-up on what the different workshops pertain to based on the color that they're highlighted in. So you'll see throughout, this is three pages plus. It's a short summer, but it's going to be a very full summer for us. The salmon-colored workshops are all based around teaching phonemic awareness and phonics. We use the Wilson Language Foundations Program in our district in grades K through three. Most of our teachers are trained in the program. They all use it. So what, what we've got here is, we've scheduled time for onboarding of new teachers who have no prior training. We also have a lot of extension courses for solidifying teachers' knowledge with the techniques that are needed and the methods for teaching phonemic awareness and phonics. So that's in the, in the salmon. In the light blue are two sets of, actually, three sets of trainings aimed at teachers who said that they would like to learn more about all of the six pillars. So there's phonological awareness and phonics, oral language, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. So I call those the soup-to-nuts workshops. They're all connected, and they are going to be offered consecutively in cycles. So we're going to offer them three times, based on teachers' summer schedules. They can sign up for those that work best for them. In green, these are online book studies that our instructional coaches will be running. As part of our preparation to transition to the Science of Reading, we looked at a lot of research. We took a lot of coursework, and we also looked at some of the professional literature that is out there, that we thought would be very advantageous to, for our teachers to participate in. to participate in, um, professional learning communities around. Our Teacher Resource Center often offers online book studies. So we decided to run, uh, some for the Science of Reading with our own in, in district staff. So you'll see them listed there. They are partly synchronous where there are online meetings, and then part of the time is dedicated to the teachers reading the actual books about instructional strategies and then responding online and sharing their responses. In addition to the light blue shading, you're going to see a shading which looks, it, it unfortunately blends in with the light blue, but it's actually gray. And these are workshops that we are going to run in our district from our partners at Erie One BOSI's, the Special Education Department there. They offer a number of very good workshops on explicit instruction, evidence-based practices for improving graduation and dropout rates for students with IEPs, um, increasing instructional time using, uh, de-escalation strategies, and a couple of others. There's one more that just came my way today that we will hopefully be able to schedule for our staff on the tenth of July. Uh, so I would, I would like to add that, uh, to these offerings as well. And these are for staff that teach the whole continuum. So anywhere from, uh, pre-kindr-, uh, kindergarten I should say, up and, up through twelfth grade. These are, are applicable. And I believe I've covered all the categories here. Does anyone have any questions about what you see here? The, uh, yellow here are some important dates. Uh, we are going to have our new teacher orientation this year, August eighteenth through twentieth. So I, I put that here so that we would not schedule over it uh, because many of the same folks who are leading these workshops also work with me on new teacher orientation. The other yellow portion here is time we're setting aside for our, uh, intermediate teachers in grades six through eight for curriculum workshops based on new resources that we are adopting. We haven't made a final decision yet, so that's why you see TBD there. And we are also going to, uh, adopt an intervention program that is aimed at, um, remediating students who are older yet still have deficits in foundational skills. So it's an age appropriate way to present and, uh, help students learn material that they did not learn when they were younger, which is one of the things that we identified as a need to bulk up our intervention, uh, menu.
Good.
Okay.
Something that we will do for you at probably a June meeting, if, if, again, we have until September first, but I'd like to display the attestation that we have to send to the state with regard to the Science of Reading and show you how we have completed that so that you'll, you'll see that we're meeting all of the state requirements in all of the components of the Science of Reading and what we're submitting to the state. We'll probably, I know, I'm going to ask Rick and Carrie to work on that. It's probably going to take another, and, you know, we're into a, a break in a day and, um, we've got some other important things going on. But we'll bring that attestation and put it live in front of you before we submit it. We'll probably do that at the June meeting, uh, and you could see how we go pre-K to three and at, attest to all of the Science of Reading requirements given to us by New York State. Any questions? Thanks, Rick, for doing that. I know I just hit you with it this morning, but I had those two documents in my desk and I thought they were so impressive to show the, and that's the beginning. That will be expanded. I have a, a couple of announcements I can make now, um, you know, to, to, if, if it's okay since we have some time. We won't take up the whole time, but, um, I wanted to begin, and I was so pleased, uh, that Mrs. Dunn was able to attend. I wanted to congratulate Dr. Lloyd Holmes. Uh, Dr. Holmes is the new president of SUNY Niagara. Uh, he was, I think it was inaugurated today and, uh, at a wonderful ceremony. Uh, we have already met with Dr. Holmes many times. As a matter of fact, he's been a regular attendee at our PTEC committee meetings. And when our ninth graders went to PTEC, uh, last Wednesday, I think it was, Dr. Holmes was in the audience, uh, with our ninth graders and North Tonawana ninth graders. He's jumped on board really quickly. He's gotten invested. He's been in many community forums. Uh, I know he lives in the Devo area of Niagara Falls, which I'm so happy to know. And I think he's Ray's neighbor, right? He lives across the street from Ray. I, I tried to warn him about Ray and his, you know, his, 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 his snow plowing, but, um, I wanted to say on behalf of all of us, Dr. Holmes, welcome, congratulations. We're glad you're with us and you jumped in with your feet and running to our district. And, uh, we are really happy that you're, you're here and you'll continue to do great things with, um, what I refer to as sometimes our twelfth campus, SUNY Niagara. It's a great value. Staying in the realm of audits and curriculum, I wanted to thank Ms. Buckman and the pre-kindergarten teachers from Kelfus, Maple, Hyde Park and GJ Mann. New York State Representative to Early Childhood was here in district the last two days, and she visited those five schools, four or five schools. She also visited our community-based organization, St. John's. And two things, and I'll let Ms. Buckman add anything else she may want to, um, though, because I was texting Carrie, "How's it going? How's it go? How's it going?" And, uh, at the end, uh, she said, uh, it was a great visit, a great visit. Usually after a visit from a state auditor, they like to schedule a, um, a debriefing to go through what they saw or found. And according to what Mrs. Buckman told me this evening, she said that she doesn't need to do that for Niagara Falls. However, Mrs. Buckman, knowing me, said I wanted about fifteen minutes of FaceTime with her. So very soon we'll get a, we'll, we'll get a full report. But our pre-K program, again, knocked it out of the park, uh, curricular wise and rituals and routine wise, and, um, I think that that's accurate. Ms. Buckman, anything else?
Um, she visited ten of our classrooms. She saw a, a full day, so she was able to see morning, late morning, lunchtime and naptime across the district. She raved about the curriculum that we use and the fidelity in which we use it. The support of the students, the, the warmth and, um, social interaction between the adults and the children and among the children was noticed and praised. And just, she had nothing but wonderful things to say about the atmosphere um, in the classrooms, um, and the support that we're giving our students. So it was a very wonderful experience and made, um, everyone very proud of the work that we do.
Yeah, I don't want to call the ten teachers out by name because I'll forget them, but to those ten teachers, I, we say thank you for being, we so, uh, we, they, they were just selected. So there was no, you know, rhyme or reason to it, and there were no airs put on it. It was just, come to your class, do your thing. I like what, I like what I heard about, uh, her first visit was to GJ Mann, and she started the day there. Can you just talk briefly about what you saw at Mann?
Um, with the beginning of the day, uh, she was, the observer, the auditor, noticed that it was a very, what she called a soft opening. So the students entered the room. They were greeted by both teachers, their classroom associates, and also some fifth grade students that were acting as teacher helpers. And they just guided the students into the room, had, helped them with their jackets, put their things away, pick up a picture to sign them from being at home into, into the classroom, and then begin playing with the toys that were laid out, and then gradually make it over to their desks to perform some activities at their desk, and then just segue into having breakfast together. It was all just very seamless, and you could tell that everyone in the room was used to this routine and enjoyed it, and we're glad to be there.
So we're expecting, uh, very few, if any, audit findings. Uh, that's great for our, the continuous flow of our UPK money. I'm really, I'm just really proud of our, our pre-K and all of our teachers. But today and yesterday, our pre-K and K teachers knocked it out of the box. Not that they don't every day, but, you know, when you have a pair of cold eyes coming from the state who allocates two million dollars for, for you, or more, uh, more than that, how much is it? Close to four million dollars. We want to make sure that they feel we're doing the right thing for our students. Keeping in that same vein, this is mainly for the viewing public. Our universal pre-K and Head Start applications are available. Any school has them. Mrs. Buckman will get you one. If you know a three-year-old, a four-year-old, or an even an early Head Start, one and two-year-old, fill out an application, get it done now, get your spot. Seats will fill up quickly. And again, just to reiterate, uh, Mr. Corella, the extended learning program for elementary go online Monday. And we're going to have a very hard deadline of May thirtieth for those elementary because we're going to, we're going to be very, based on the budget money, we're going to be very, you know, very specific with class size, the right amount. And we, we, we're going to hire based on the commitment of parents to come. Those are, I have just three other announcements that I'll save for the end of the meeting, but that's, uh, that's, um, really, really what's going on. Well, I'll take, uh, yeah, I'll take one of them now. Um, we, tomorrow, at the conclusion of school, we enter a two-week recess. So students are off for two weeks. A ten-month staff are off for two weeks. The di- the district is open during those two weeks. Uh, schools will close down around three-thirty or four. They have an abbreviated schedule. They don't keep, the buildings open till ten o'clock. It was a long haul from Christmas to Easter. This is a late Easter. Um, we've had a really good week. Last week was a little rambunctious. This has been a really good week, uh, but, um, everybody, I know the students, many of them are looking forward to a break. Some of them are. Some of them would rather be with us in school. And, um, for those that are traveling, safe travels. For those that are staying home, rest and relaxation. The board will be open every day except Friday, the eighteenth. We'll close completely. And, um, I, I, it was a long haul. And guess what? When we come back, it's May. It's crazy to say that. It's absolutely crazy to say we'll come back. And I think Thursday, the week we come back is May first. And then, you know, dinner, dinner season starts, right? There's, there's plenty of dinners and plenty of events and plenty of high school things to happen. So I'll, I'll, I'll reserve, um, uh, I have a concerning comment and a, and a real super positive one, but I'll reserve those to the end and it won't be too long, unless anyone else has their comments for me. Anybody else? Okay. Yep. Take fifteen. Thank you.
Will we stand for the pledge to the flag? Call the meeting in order.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united in one common purpose, with liberty, justice, and all
We will have a prayer by Mr. Billson.
Let us take a moment to pause and reflect as we gather here in service to our students, our educators, and our community. May we be guided by wisdom, compassion, and shared sense of purpose. May we listen to the open, may we listen with open minds, speak with respectful voices, and make decisions that reflect integrity and care for all those we represent. Let our focus remain on what is best for children, families that are in our district, and may our actions tonight build trust, progress, and unity. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve on this board, for the dedication of everyone present and watching at home. Let us begin our work with humility and our commitment to do what's right and just. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Nice job. Okay. I do not have any agenda items, Speaker, so we will move on. 401 and 402 together. 401 in the minutes of March 25.
Mr. Petrosi?
Pardon me. Oh, color roll.
Pardon me, just, just to be proper.
I'm sorry, Judy.
My mistake.
I'm in a hurry today. Trying to get that vacation.
I understand. I understand. Mr. Bass is excused, Mr. Billson.
Here.
Mr. Kinselmi is excused, Mr. Capizzi.
Here.
Mrs. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. McLeod is excused, Mr. Peretto.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Mr. Petrosi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. 401 and 402 will take together 01 minutes of the March 25, and 402, Budget Transfer Number Nine. Tony. Nick. Questions? Call the roll, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. 404, Treasurer's Report, received and filed, along with 405, Budget Status Report. Moving down to 406, Personnel Report Certificated. Thank you, Tony. Second, Nick. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Capizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Petrosi.
Yes. Thank you, Judy. 407, Personnel Report Classified. Nick.
Second.
Tony. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Capizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Petrosi.
Yes, thank you again. 408 and 409, we will take together. 08 is the report on the Committee on Special Ed, and 409 is the report from the Committee on Preschool Special Ed. Nick. Rob, questions? Call the roll, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
411, Head Start and Early Head Start Reports, as we do monthly. Tony? Thank you, Rob. Questions? Call the roll, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much again. We will take 601 next. 601 is the approval of the nomination of David Lowery for placement on the ballot for the election of member of the New York State School Boards Association, Board of Directors from our area. Tony? Thanks, Nick. Questions? Call the roll, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks again. We'll take 602 to 605 together. 02 is the approval of the filing proposed District Code of Conduct as amended. 603 is the approval of filing a summary of building level, school safety plans as amended. 604 is the approval of the filing of proposed comprehensive district-wide safety plan as amended. And 605 is the approval of the 24, 25 health service fees for non-resident private and parochial school students. Nick? Tony? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Capizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Petrosi.
Yes, thank you very much. 606 is the approval of the revision to the continuation application for the 25, 26 Head Start and Early Head Start Grant. Tony? Rob, questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Capizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Petrosi.
Yes. Hi, thank you. I'll take 607 and 609 together. 07 is a motion for approval of the resolution to repair our feral boiler at our central office building. 608 is to use the pesticides on the grounds of Niagara Falls High School for control of ticks while no one's using the, using the fields. 609 is the approval of standardization purchase of Ford Motor Company vehicles for all district vehicles. Nick? Tony's the second. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Capizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Petrosi.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to take 6.10 to 6.12. These are in, all in regards to our budget. 6.10, Superintendent's Recommended General Fund Budget for the year 25, 26. 611 is the approval, excuse me, acceptance and approval of the Real Property Tax Report Card for 25, 26. And 6.12 is the approval of the Corrective Action Plan in response to the District Internal Audit Report for 23, 24. Nick, second. Tony? Mark, if you wanted to say?
I do want to say something to, to the community. This budget that we're recommending to you is responsible. It is balanced. It allows us to do what we need to do to help support students. It's fair to the community because we have, again, at least during my nine years as superintendent, we have not raised the tax levy one cent. I don't think there's any need to do that. We should be able to run our district with what we have. We certainly hope and wished we had had a state budget by now, but I, I think that based on the information that we had and the last seven board meetings, we are presenting to you and then with your approval, hopefully to the public, a very fair, reasonable budget that again does not impact one current employee. It does not impact one program for kids. There are some additions to it. I appreciate the board for insisting that we have a summer program despite the laws of a grant, well, the expiration of grant, not laws. And this is a responsible budget. We need one more than 50% to pass it on May 20th. I, I really feel that it's the best education budget we can give the city of Niagara Falls, and I would urge your yea vote on this budget at this time.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. I do. I already have it. Any questions? Any more questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Capizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Petrosi.
Before I vote, I'd just like to make a few comments. We are financially sound, and I wish to commend all of our staff, Mark especially, and our financial officers. It's, you did a fantastic job. If you look at other districts and other cities, if you look at the nightmare Buffaloes having, because they blew all the federal funds and now they don't have any money, where our district did the right thing, matched one-shot revenues with one-shot expenses, and built our reserves whenever we could. Years ago, when I came along, my state, my statement has been, we couldn't buy a toaster. Well, now we can buy the oven. So, I really appreciate all of you done. You guys did a great job. You should be commended. Thank you, and thank you for making it easy for us.
Thank you.
And I definitely vote yes. Okay. We will move on to 6. We will move on to 6.13 for a change order number SCC-13. Thank you, Rob.
Second.
Tony. Questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Capizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Petrosi.
Yes, thank you. I am going to take several payments for our contractors that have all done a great job on our capital projects. 6.14 to 19, 6.19. 14 is number 12, payment 12 to Scifari. 6.15 is payment number 13 to Danforth. 6.16 is payment 13 to Danforth. Payment 617 to Fry Electric, sorry. 6.18, number 9, to Johnson Controls. And 6.19, payment 13, to Stark. Move. Tony.
Second.
Rob. Questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Billson.
Yes.
Mr. Capizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Petrosi.
Yes, thank you. Okay. We don't have any policies?
No, could I just make an adjustment here? Thank you, Mr. Ventry, for your eagle eye. If you scroll up, Ray, the board meeting's in May, and we do have, again, a little bit of time. That's Thursday, May 8th, and Thursday, May 15th, and you're correct, Mr. Ventry, the superintendent's scholar dinner is on that night. So we'll correct it. Those are both Thursdays, and then the statutory is on a Wednesday. That is correct, the 21st, because that's the day after the election.
The rec.
The certification. So those Wednesdays should be Thursdays, but the Wednesday at 21 is correct. Eagle Eye Ventry, good job.
Nice job. Thank you very much. Moving on, informational reports.
Community speakers, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I know.
I'm sorry.
I was just making that statement. Before, we have a community open forum for non-agenda items. Three minutes, please. I will let you know at 30 seconds. First person up is Tina Schultz, and second person is Michael Barxdale.
Good evening. Dr. Tina Schultz, president and CEO for the Niagara Community Information Group, also known as NSIG. I'm going to give you a little bit of a conversation about what we're doing. Our motto is, "Don't just talk about it, be about it." And that's what we've been doing just this past two weeks as far as the cellphone mandates. So I'm going to give you a little bit of information about that. When New York announced plans to restrict cellphones in schools starting this fall, the Niagara Community Information Group, NSIG, didn't just wait for changes to happen. We created a space for people to, who are going to be the most affected, to be heard. As I said before, we don't just talk about it, we be about it. So we had the meeting, we had the discussions, a few of them. NSIG's recent teen town halls and listening sessions modeled exactly how community policies should work. Students shared how phones impacted their learning and their social lives. Parents voiced safety concerns, and teachers offered practical classroom insights. In an era when top-down mandates often dominate education policy, these forums, these listening sessions, demonstrated the power of intergenerational dialogue. These forums weren't just about cellphones. They were about showing young people that their voices matter. They matter in civic decisions, those decisions that affect them. With Governor Hochul's bell-to-bell restrictions taking place this coming fall, NSIG will compile all the feedback for local leaders. We're doing that, we've already done that. We're going to ensure policy reflects on-the-ground realities before locker purchases and other enforcement systems are in place. The sessions revealed generational divides. The sessions talked about teens advocated for emergency access assistive technologies and after-class recreation. Parents split between supporting bands and wanting safety. Educators emphasized consistent enforcement strategies. One participant noted how much perspectives shifted when people actually listened to each other.
30 seconds.
The two town halls held in early April yielded 54 participants, consisting of students, parents, teachers, and community members. As districts statewide prepare their approaches, NSIG's model offers to, as a blueprint, policy works best when it starts with conversations and civic engagement. NSIG continues to gather feedback through our website, and that's niagaracommunityinfo.org. We're still accepting feedback. We invite district leaders to engage with us, to review the detailed insights gathered from the community members during our town hall sessions. As always, we're always open to discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Barxdale.
Good evening. Nice haircut there, Mr. Petrosi. Nice haircut. Welcome back, Mr. Peretto. Still have the glasses up here. Michael Barxdale, Independence Avenue. I am the COO of Niagara Community Information Group. So as a result of last month's Board of Education meeting on March 27th, it has become increasingly clear that the board takes a hostile stance towards legitimate concerns raised by the community. Despite repeated calls for transparency and accountability, we continue to receive dismissive responses, deflections, or outright rejections of collaborative efforts. Given this reality, I am formally requesting clear, data-driven answers to the following. The district claims Niagara Falls High School students have access to 64 college courses, but access means little without results. How many students are actually enrolled in these courses? How many students successfully complete the courses? Which colleges and universities recognize these courses for credit? These are basic accountability metrics that should already be tracked and publicly available. The district assumes fiscal responsibility for an already existing federally funded head start program. It did not create it or build it. What measurable improvements in kindergarten readiness and literacy have resulted since the district took control? Can the district provide specific data proving it has enhanced rather than simply maintained the program? The district claims it is spending every dollar to make the kids the best, yet in what academic areas are they actually excelling? Reading recovery is repeatedly touted as an intervention, yet multiple lawsuits challenge its effectiveness while continuing pouring money into something that is actively being debunked. The focus of spending over results is alarming. If money alone guarantees success, why does student achievement remain stagnant? Community collaboration and the board's repeated rejections. For nearly 18 months, we, Niagara Community Information Group, have made repeated efforts to work with the district to address these issues. Every single time, the board has either ignored, dismissed, or outright rejected collaboration. If we are better when we come together, why does the board continuously refuse to work with invested community members? Is the board's resistance ego-driven, or is it afraid of real accountability? We have never once suggested that board members are paid. However, since taxpayers fund the district's operation, it is fair to ask, what exactly is the community getting in return for the leadership? The Niagara Falls Black Achiever Awards were revived. It's a positive milestone. Yet why did two board members publicly highlight Mark Lowery's recognition while completely ignoring Mr. Earl Bass or Mrs. Dorothy Brundage? Is there a reason for this selective acknowledgement? If the board wants to support black achievement, why ignore longstanding local leaders who have been pillars in the community? The district provides iPads before students can even read and decode the word "Apple" or "iPad." Does this make sense? During budget discussions, you talk more about money than math. How many students can actually read and understand the financial reports that you display? The district boasts about the latest technology in safety, but yet high-tech safety is also in prisons, and schools have become direct pipelines to incarceration because of misplaced priorities. What concrete steps is the district taking to prevent overpolicing of students and focus on actual education? So a board member stated in the last meeting in March, "Niagara Falls is lucky to have a board like this. If that's the case, then the board should take full responsibility for the district's continued poor performance in reading and math, the lack of real student-centered solutions, the board's own refusal to engage with the very community it serves. At this point, empty rhetoric is unacceptable. I expect concrete, data-backed responses to these questions, not another round of vague talking points, dismissive attitudes, or misplaced defensiveness. The Niagara Falls community deserves better. I look forward to your responses." And to recap something we just said, we keep harping on. The last three years, I've heard it, no increase in the tax levy in 10 years, no increase in literacy and math rates. There seems to be a correlation there. Thank you.
Gloria Dosen.
She's not here, Mr. Petrosi. Hold on, go ahead, is that okay?
Any objection, folks? Nope, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Portland Jackson. I live at 605 Chasm Avenue. Ms. Gloria, in her absence, could not be here today. She asked me to read a love letter to the board that she wrote. Dear administrators and Niagara Falls Board of Education staff, I hope this love letter lets you know that all of you are truly appreciated, and this is written on behalf of children. I want to wish all of you a safe and pleasant Easter break. Every person who works for the Niagara Falls Board of Education, teachers, the school maintenance personnel, the cooks, security persons who keep our children safe, custodians who keep our schools clean, board members, legal staff, and yours truly, Mr. Mark Lowery, one of the most compassionate superintendent of schools, a person who puts children first. If it has not been said, being children, they don't always show appreciation. They don't realize you are parents as well and must go home after a difficult day and deal with your own family. But they do have confidence in their teachers. We all need a break. Not only that, children have dealt with the death of their friends, and some families are struggling trying to understand how and why their child, and as a parent, you were there to comfort them in the time of need. In two more months, schools will end. Hard to believe, time has gone by so fast. Yes, we need a break, and "we" meaning everyone. Take this break seriously. Spread love with your children. Spend time with your spouses, and spend time with yourself. Rejuvenate. Life is short. Again, I speak on behalf of the children. They need all of you, so take care of yourself, eat healthy, and enjoy your vacation. Always tell someone you love them and mean it from your heart, and you never know that that person is longer with you. Have a blessed and safe Easter. Gloria J. Dosen.
Thank you.
Is it okay I continue because I'm up here again?
Yeah, you're up.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So this is on behalf of the Cell Educational Club. I am a member, and I want to read to you a letter about our upcoming scholarship dinner that will be held June 13th. Good evening, God bless, Niagara Falls Board of Education members. On behalf of the Cell Educational Club, we would celebrate 56 years of providing college scholarships to well-deserving students to help them financially in the first year of college, also for students who have decided to enter into the military, and for the students who will attend a vocational school are also privileged to apply. We are asking for your support from our Niagara Falls Board of Education members to support this lasting endeavor. Your presence is well-needed. Will you kindly join us along with our civic leaders, churches, and members of the community on Friday, June 13th at 6:00 PM at the Niagara Falls High School? One of our award recipients' name is Mr. Philip Moore, a teacher at Cataract Elementary, who received the education award and an honor deserved. Tickets are $40. We are sure you may want to personally congratulate Mr. Moore and the scholarship winners. Also, we have provided with you ad sheets. I have those, and I will give those to you. Thank you and enjoy your Easter break. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I give this to you now?
Judy, yeah.
Judy?
Yeah, if you would. Give it to Judy. That would be great. Okay, I will. Mark, you want to finish?
Yes, yeah, really quickly. I wanted to congratulate our students. This was ELA state testing week, and it's no secret that it was not an easy week for kids across the state. To say that I'm disappointed with the way that the state testing rolled out is an understatement. The, as Ray calls them in his technology terms, the contention issues of having everyone get out of test at one time and not have kids being able to, despite the fact that they prepared and got ready and worked, should have been worked out far before it was on testing day. So I just wanted to voice my displeasure for the way that rolled out for kids in both Niagara Falls and across the state. And I plan on putting together those comments and others for the commissioner to consider. Kids don't deserve that, not in any way, shape, or form. We are having a growing list of golden apples that I'd like to recommend to you, and yesterday we just received tremendous news. The Buffalo Bills Foundation, who has done a lot of great things for our kids in the district, has donated $100,000 to Feed More in the name of the Niagara Falls City School District. So again, we could have a complete backpack program and food pantry in our middle schools. That gift will go to Feed More from the Buffalo Bills organization, saying that this is on behalf of the work that the Niagara Falls School District does, and those programs will stay in place. Eternally grateful to the Bills Foundation for doing that. It's been a great week with them because on Tuesday, we received a call from the front offices of the Bills, and they'd like our trauma-informed students to come and present to the Bills executives what they have learned and know about trauma, and that'll happen on May 14th. So all around, a good source of money for our needy students and a great honor for our trauma-informed group. To everyone else, and thank you about scholarships. I'll look at you, Mr. Ventry. We've got to get our kids to fill those scholarship forms out. Fill them out because they deserve them and they earned them. Fill them out, fill them out, fill them out. If you're listening and you have a senior, please get that done. Otherwise, travels are coming up, as Portland described, safe, healthy, relaxing. Catch your breath before the big finish, which is coming up when we return, but please travel safe, please be well, please take care of yourself. We need everybody back after a bit of rest, and that goes for board members, too. Thank you for your volunteer work and your support and all that you've done each Thursday for the last four weeks. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Ms. Clara.
Not much to say. I just want to say I had the pleasure of attending the inauguration for Mr. Holmes. I was very happy and pleased when I heard from his statement. Sounds like he's very committed to improving the college, and what I was happy to hear that he is going to be very hands-on in the community. I believe he's going to be a valuable asset to our school district as well as our community, and I'm looking forward to speaking to him more and finding out many other ways that he can help our community. So I congratulate him. Not only is he the
You know, I, if I may, I'd like to invite him to a board meeting. I thought it'd be okay. I, I'd like everyone to meet him. Um, again, as I said, the team has met him and we've worked with him, but I think he, because of his connection, he should come here before you, and I, I will invite him to an upcoming board meeting so you can hear his vision directly and meet him, and, uh, he, he's, he's a, he's a delightful guy. He really is. He really is a good man.
Mark, I have, I have the pleasure of sitting with him on the chamber board. He really is dynamic. He's, he's really a good person. I think he's gonna do very well.
Me, too.
For, he's gonna do very well for the college. Okay, Mr. Nick Valardo?
No, I just, uh, wanted to tell everybody, we, uh, myself and, uh, Mr. Dunn attended a national school board conference in Atlanta, and we picked up a lot of information. I passed it along to Mr. Laurie. And the main theme of that was, there were a lot of, uh, seminars about AI. Some of it is good, and some of it is not good, so it's something we're gonna have to deal with, and I know Superintendent Ray will be on this continually. I'd like to say a lot more, but on better judgment, I will not. So I just wish everybody a happy Easter and a good holiday. Thank you.
Rob?
It's been a great year so far. Wish everybody a safe and happy two weeks, and then to Mark's point, we're off to the races to the end. Enjoy and be safe.
Thanks, Rob. Tony?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, our financial staff, excellent, did another excellent job preparing this budget. It's a ton of work and a ton of hours, and us board members and myself, we, we appreciate that hard work that you do. Um, I wish everybody a happy and safe Easter holiday, and, uh, all my board members, safe travels, and, uh, all the folks out there that can listen. We have some students in Europe right now.
They, they're, they're on their way home right now.
On their way home right now. I heard they're having a blast.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, another, and we have our, uh, our, uh, the, I think we have our Earls traveling along with.
Right.
With the, with the.
Historically, Black College Tour de Merle.
I think we have the baseball team is in Florida.
On their way.
On their way, right. So our varsity baseball team, which we have high hopes for also, they have a lot of seniors, so we're, we're hoping a lot of good things.
And he's good. I don't know where he gets his baseball tail.
Yeah. It's a family tree. That's a beautiful thing. That's how you gotta do it. And, uh, again, everybody have a, uh, wonderful holiday and, and God bless.
Thank you. Anyone along the wall? Angelo?
Hello?
Judy? Ray? Nobody else? Okay. Um, I'll be really brief. First thing, I had the opportunity to go to Maple Avenue for a little awards assembly this afternoon. I must say, I never, I have never seen so much energy in one room in my life. Those little kids were, they just were having a ball, and it was, it was nice to see that upbeat, you know, especially in young kids. Second, I'd like to address, um, the tax situation. I'm very proud of this board, and I'm very proud of my, my years here in not raising taxes except for four percent, but I don't want the public to think that we are not generous to our children. Our budget's two hundred and two million dollars, and goes up four, five, six million a year, and it's good budgety, it's smart work. We've added a social work department that we didn't have years ago. We've added approximately fifty, around fifty staff to Niagara Falls, Niagara Falls High School since COVID. We give our kids everything we can give them, but we also need to be fiscally, fiscally responsible, and I will take that hit if that's what they, if they think that's the wrong thing to do and raise taxes ten, fifteen, Buffalo's eight percent. I, I just think we've done a, a, a very good job at it, and we didn't, we didn't blow the COVID money, which many people did, and I'm proud of that. And saying that, we will, will adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of the following. Donna Frazier, grandmother of Laura Kajashian, Susan Weston, associate at bond. There will be no executive session. We are now adjourning in the memory of those people. All in favor of adjournment? I oppose.
Mr. Petrosi, just, we just received some really awful news, too, that one of our occupational therapists, uh, who works at Cataract Elementary passed away today, Dorita Brown. So that happened late in the afternoon, um, and, um, you know, it's, gosh, every time I walked into Cataract, I saw Dorita, and she was with the Memorial Hospital for a long time, uh, and a, and a great occupational therapist, and we found that out about four o'clock today, so I'll make sure Judy has that for next week, but I did wanna mention that, and, um, for the staff and the students that know her, we'll be prepared for tomorrow. But boy, life is fragile. Life is fragile, and, uh, our, our best wishes and prayers to her families.
Kinda makes all our issues small.
Yeah.
You know, thank you, good night, happy holiday. Enjoy. See you in a couple of weeks.
Did you know her?